All right, at six o'clock, I want to call this meeting to order. Tammy, if you wouldn't mind taking silent road call. First item up is approval of tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of the closed session.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
This time I'll call for the vote. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
What? I'm trying to clear my throat. I'm waking up. Getting the looks from the peanut crowd over here.
Next?
Yeah. Alderman Dent? And Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Here we go. All right, next up is first and second reading. Start off Bill number thirty-six seventy-three.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to walk you all through the staff summary for this first set of ordinances before we have Tammy read them. Just to make sure that you all understand what's going on, okay, because there's, the first several go together, I think six go together. So, oh, my apologies, I have the wrong meeting pulled up here, just a second. You guys don't want to do the planning and zoning meeting too, do you?
No.
Okay, so, in this evening's packing, and again, this is just the first read for these ordinances. But this, these first several pertain specifically to the electric rates. At our last utility committee meeting, we did not have a quorum, so they could not make an official recommendation. So what's presented to you are both options that were presented to the utility committee, okay? So, in a nutshell, you also all have a handout that I put at your places. So, to explain what that is, staff's initial recommendation going into the utility committee meeting was to keep rates as they were, okay? But, we also had a rate study done this last year. It was completed in February. UFS is the company who did that. And they did a proposal that outlined an actual, they said that basically residential customers were subsidizing commercial customers in our system. So they outlined a rate proposal over the next three years that did a, that added service availability fees back into the mix for all three categories, for residential, commercial, and demand meter customers. But, it had a two percent reduction for all three of those years to residential rates. And then it had a, I want to say an eight percent, forgive me, I should look at my notes here. It had an eight percent increase for commercial, and then it had a reduction also for demand customers over each of those three years. A two percent reduction for both residential and demand, eight percent increase each year for commercial. And interestingly, if you look at the net outcome, the far right column on that page I handed out, for residential customers, it is a slight decrease for your average bill. For those who use larger amounts, this is based on the average of eight hundred, nine hundred and eighty-one kilowatts per month, which is what the study determined was our actual average household usage. It's a reduction of, not quite a dollar, after the three years, for residential. Commercial customers is an increase of about six dollars per month. And then demand customers, it's a decrease of about fourteen dollars a month. So that's the net outcome if we followed all three years and assuming no increase in electric cost. Now, of course, we know that's not realistic, but I had to have some numbers to base this on. So, that's what this spreadsheet is in front of you. That shows each year if we were to follow UFS's recommendations. Okay, so I wanted to make sure, because when I did these calculations, it did not come out the way I thought it was going to. I didn't realize we were going to have a reduction for demand customers as well as residential. But this way you can see kind of real numbers, just how much those reductions and increases are. So, the series of ordinances that are on the agenda. You have two options, I won't go over in detail, but, two options, the first one being that you go with staff's original recommendation, which was to keep rates the same, in which case you would simply, at the next meeting, vote to keep them the same. And then you would adopt the very first bill, which is Bill number thirty-six seventy-three, which does make a change to the demand portion of the ordinance, and that's simply establishing a timeline. So right now, our ordinance reads that any customer who uses twenty-five kilowatt demand or more shall have a demand meter. And that's all it says. So, does that mean forevermore? How often are we supposed to be looking at that? So this gives us, this bill actually gives us some parameters that we look at it in a twelve-month increment coinciding with the review of utility rates each year, okay? So, that would be option one, keep rates as they are, and then add the language for the terms for demand. Option two would be to go with UFS's recommendations. And then it also includes that change for the demand meters, giving them those terms. So those are the options. There are multiple bills to go with the second option, because of the different sections of code. Okay? There any questions at any of you? That's kind of in a nutshell, without getting into details.
So the service availability fee that featured on the second option, when we, when that was previously instituted, we had a purpose for it.
Correct.
And so, is this, if, if this was an option and we voted for this, what, the service availability fee, what would that, is it just to go back to infrastructure? Do we have a, like a purpose like we did before, for that money to go somewhere?
Right, so previously the purpose was to build up our reserve fund. So the reason for service availability fees, the reason most utilities have them now, is an understanding that there is a cost to the utility, whether we deliver one kilowatt hour or a thousand kilowatt hours. There's a cost. But our large users, and this is reflected in the spreadsheet, if you look at this, the demand customers on year three have a seventy-eight dollar a month service availability fee. We have to deliver far more power to them. These are larger lines, they're larger transformers, I mean, everything that's not required if we're just delivering power to a household. So that service availability fee is to help cover the cost of that upgraded infrastructure to provide them service. So that's the reason for service availability fees in a nutshell. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I mean, it looks to me like, you know, what we're saying is we have a fixed cost to put a meter on.
Yes.
And, and, and the way it looks, it looks like residential has the lowest, then commercial, and then demand. I mean, we had a meeting on this.
Yes.
We met with them. That's what I thought, okay.
Yes. And so tonight, this is just first read of each of these bills. And then next week, at our regularly scheduled Alderman meeting, would be for you all to vote.
Okay.
But yeah, certainly if you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer. And, you know, I will add also, many cities have a tiered rate system. The residential rates are not the same as their commercial or the demand rates. So I mean, this is not unusual, it's just a little different for us in recent history.
Right.
Would you like Tammy to proceed with reading the bills?
Is it safe?
Safe?
Yes. All right. Just wanted to know if we're all ready to get started on this.
I, I think so.
Pretty long list here.
If you all do not have further questions, we're ready to move on.
All right, start with Bill number thirty-six seventy-three.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-three, an ordinance establishing rates for electric services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-four?
Bill number thirty-six seventy-four, an ordinance establishing rates for electric services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-five?
Bill number thirty-six seventy-five, an ordinance establishing rates for electric services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-six?
Bill number thirty-six seventy-six, an ordinance establishing rates for electric services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-seven?
Bill number thirty-six seventy-seven, an ordinance establishing rates for electric services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Thank you for all those first reads. All right, now onto the good stuff. First and second reading for Bill number thirty-six seventy-eight.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number five with Donald Magi Incorporated for the Salem Sidewalk Improvements Project, project number TAP nine-nine-zero-one-five-two-zero, and authorizing an increase in the contract amount and extension of the project completion date.
All right, so this item, sorry, this item of course is the downtown project, and a timeline extension. So, what's remaining on this project is to actually connect the electricity to the streetlights. So I saw they do have the globes up, got those up over the weekend, we've got flags on the poles, so that last piece is just the electric connection. So there is a piece, a meter base, and I did want to explain this to you all. So none of our other streetlights in town are metered. So, the issue there is that when we go to try to determine line loss, or electricity loss through our system, we have things like streetlights and dawn-to dusk lights that the city has that aren't metered. And so we don't know exactly how much they're using. And so many cities are moving toward metering their streetlights, so that it's a known quantity. So this covers the cost of the meter base, as well as the extension of the timeline for them to complete this. The extension of this timeline does not allow for the timeline for these materials to come in. When they were ordered, we were told about eighteen weeks, okay? We have an option to go another route and to direct wire them and get them up. And then we could close out this, and then we would have this meter base coming in, and our crews could down the line, set them up on a meter. So, before you tonight is just the extension of this timeline, and then the, the cost of that meter base. If we want to move forward, like I said, that's not included in tonight's agenda item about just direct wiring them. But, staff, we're kind of thinking that's the way to go and get this project closed out.
Agree.
Any further questions?
Permission to read Bill number thirty-six seventy-eight by caption only.
Yes, please.
Second reading.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute change order number five with Donald Magi Incorporated for the Salem Sidewalk Improvements Project, project number TAP nine-nine-zero-one-five-two-zero, and authorizing an increase in the contract amount and extension of the project completion date.
Thank you. This time, do I have a motion for Bill number thirty-six seventy-eight?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill thirty-six seventy-eight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
If you want to.
I'll take it.
This time I'll call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Step, first and second reading for Bill number thirty-six seventy-nine.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-nine, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the city of Salem, Missouri, beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto. Permission to read thirty-six seventy-nine, the second reading, by caption only.
Yes, please.
Bill number thirty-six seventy-nine, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the city of Salem, Missouri, beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
So we do have a couple of changes to the budget, since anyone has seen it last. Do you want to talk about those, Stacy?
Okay, so, presented is a balanced budget with revenues exceeding expenditures by approximately one million dollars. We do have six funds that will utilize prior year fund balances totaling around eight hundred thousand. The use of prior year funds for the capital improvements was not initially discussed at the finance or the capital improvement committee meeting. As it was anticipated that the downtown TAP project would be completed, however, it remains open, so we'll have some carryover expenditures and revenues in this new budget year. So I think it's like forty, what was it, about thirty-three thousand of prior year fund balances that will be used for the capital improvement fund. And then, we also had to add two new funds to, to meet the state revolving fund requirements associated with the bond financing processing, and those were, are within the sewer fund. So it was a debt service fund and a sewer revenue fund. So any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So I do have a note for the airport portion, so we had the meeting the other night. So with the construction of the new six hangar, the cost out of pocket for the hangar itself was roughly forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand dollars for building that building. With that, you know, the proposed, I don't know, sixty-two thousand five hundred was for like the taxiways for future endeavors. So I just used that number because I couldn't go back far enough to figure out how much we used for the six hangar. With that being said, they proposed in this budget with the revenues for the hangar, all hangars included, was about ten thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. However, with, you know, the rental fees of all the hangars, trying to recuperate the money, the close to a hundred thousand dollars for that one six hangar. So I wanted to note on that, that even if we took future funding from all the hangars and put it directly back into the fund to potentially build additional, to make, you know, to expand what they have, if we designate all the money, it would take about nine years to recoup that. Now, of course, there was grant funding involved in the majority of that, and we were just, had to match a portion of it. And that's the only portion I'm talking about, is was coming from their own internal revenue. In the last three years, about sixty thousand has been pulled from their reserve funds going back, and that's not a sustainable practice. And what I don't want to see is, they get into a situation where something needs to happen, something needs to be repaired for them to be successful and keep the airport open, and they no longer have the funding. With that being said, if with their proposed budget, they'll have about a hundred and four thousand left in the account based off of the pulling from reserve funds for what's coming up. So four out of five years pulling from the reserve, it's not really sustainable. Talking about needs versus wants. So one of the things that they had brought up, they were focusing pretty good on, was the, having a automated gate system. Well, that gate system, they roughly budgeted about five thousand dollars of the budget towards that. Now, the current gate system that's in place, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just a little tedious, you have to get out of your vehicle, unchain it, and open it up, versus an automated, let it be digital keypad or a button. Needs versus wants. I don't think until they're in a good position that they're having, and not necessarily an increase, but at least being positive a little, that I don't know that a want is necessarily the way, the direction we want to go. So, there was two things that they added to this, the five thousand for the gate opener and twenty-five hundred for a security camera. So the security camera is a positive in a couple of different ways. Safety for everybody that's out there, a record of detailing what's going on. Maybe possibly having it to where law enforcement has a direct line of sight out there in case something were to happen. Possible insurance benefits. So as far as safety and security, I would still consider that to be a positive. That's not necessarily a want, I think that's a need. But in regards to the gate opener, I don't know that, that's the direction that we want to take. Just food for thought.
Is there any, did they have any consideration to future thought for increases on rental fees to maybe, or do something out there at the airport to where?
So, yes.
Start building something back?
So they're, over the next couple of years, they're talking about increasing the hangar rates, correct?
No. Only on the old ones?
In general, is what I was referring to, not necessarily the new six hangar.
The old ones have two more years of increases.
Okay.
It's ten dollars a month.
Right.
Gotcha.
And we have three of those slated for demolition? So.
So what, what they had proposed in this budget was that they were going to make ten thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, roughly. But, in regards to the new hangar, I guess there would be no increase on that one.
How's the lease work on that? Is it annually, monthly?
Annual.
Annual, okay. I think that the gate piece that I have a concern over is, there's a liability issue for the city of Salem. And we know for a fact that non-tenants use the airport. They use it for photo sessions, they use it for personal aviation, recreational aviation. And we don't have any way to control that with just a key, because they're getting in there somehow. Someone's giving them access.
Well, I, I don't necessarily know that that's a gate issue, right, because there's already a gate in place and...
There is, there is, but how do, how do we eliminate that unauthorized youth?
So.
I'm, I'm asking for an ideal. I agree with the financial aspect of it.
Well, so my understanding right now is that it's patlocked with a chain. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a combo lock.
Okay, so it has a combination lock on it currently. I don't necessarily know that somebody's breaking into a combination lock, and, or, have they talked about issues about the locks specifically being broken on that chain, or the chain being cut?
No, not this time. We haven't changed that combination since I've been in this position, so that's something we could do. But, yeah, the mangate stays open, so people can walk in and out of there, so, but vehicle traffic wise, it should, if the combo is just kept to the pilots and stuff, it should be fine, so.
I can show you pictures of cars on runways for senior pictures.
Gotcha.
I know, I know there were pictures with airplanes last year.
How did it, well, there's cars too. How did it get in there if they're, if they're not letting the gate in?
Right, somebody's giving them the combo.
Yeah, and the mangate, you know, we had a person report to us that they were out walking around, looking in, into windows and airplanes when I was on the board. So, and when I called Vichy Airport, that was a red flag. We're liable for the safety and the security of those planes, and if you can just nonchalantly, I mean, the person that did it thought because it was a public airport, they had the right to go out there and walk around. But the FFA, the Federal Aviation, says no, no, no.
So the, the combination lock though is fairly, I mean, it's about a year old?
Yeah, that was.
That we put a combination lock.
Okay, yeah, I remember that.
It was a keyed lock before.
Right.
And, and there was also some issues prior to that, where, where the pilots weren't locking it, they didn't want to mess with it.
Yeah.
And so, that could be how cars and stuff were getting on. I don't, I don't know if that's still been an issue of them just leaving it unlocked, since we put the combination lock on it.
Right.
So.
That's why cameras. I think cameras would address that. Best way to fix that.
And, and that was part of their budget addition, was for the camera system, the twenty-five hundred dollars roughly. So, and I think that'll go a long way in helping towards that, especially with people knowing, hey, now there's a camera system going to be out there, we're going to be monitoring it, or law enforcement will have access to monitor as well. So that can help towards that cause, I just don't know that a gate's a gate.
Right.
Digital, whatever.
Yeah.
If people are going, want to get in, they're going to get in, regardless of what type of gate system we have.
Right.
With that being said, I think what's been there ten, fifteen years, it works. It's just, people are going to do what people do. So I don't know if wasting more money on a newer fence is going to fix that problem. Thank you, Steve.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, on this, and this is something that, I'll just put it out there. You know, when you all are looking at the budget as a whole, and, and, and I know we have a committee system set up for public input, so that we get a broader scope of who's looking at things. And you all are the final say on the budget, whatever, whatever department, whatever committee recommendation, it's all finally up to you. And you all can take, take a stance on something and choose to cut something, or you all can approve a budget and give direction moving forward. So I mean, I'm just, want to throw out there some different options, so that you all can think about how you might want to address an issue that you might see. Okay? Now, understand, if it's to give direction, then it needs to be something that the board is on board with and the majority votes for. So, okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'm good.
All right. This time, do I have a motion for Bill number thirty-six seventy-nine?
I move to approve Bill number thirty-six seventy-nine.
Do I have a second? No second?
No second.
All right. Bill number thirty-nine, or thirty-six seventy-nine fails for lack of motion.
Forgive me, could we get some direction then on this? I mean, if, if you all are, as a board, are not going to approve the budget, where do we as staff need to go with this?
Good question.
I, I mean, we've, we've heard from Alderman Kinsey, he, his concern, are there other concerns?
I guess I wasn't clear if we... I guess I wasn't clear if, uh, we were including the gate or not including the gate.
Well, at the budget as is includes the gate.
Okay.
So.
So you need direction.
I need direction or, or emotion to that effect.
Direction is, is to strike the funding from the gate apparently.
You all can do that through emotion.
Okay, okay.
To approve the budget, striking whatever you all feel you would like struck.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Again, you all are the ultimate say on it.
Right.
So. This time, do we have another motion for bill number thirty-six seventy-nine?
I'll make a motion for bill number three-six-seven-nine, uh, in its entirety with the exception of removal of the five thousand dollar additive on the airport side for the gate.
Do I have a second? Okay. No second. Motion fails due to lack of support. This time, does the board have any direction and like to give for staff?
Well, now that I understand the, uh, the exception to, to the gate, and since I was a proponent for the gate, I would have seconded Mr. Letchworth's, uh, motion if I'd been clear on it.
Okay.
And we need someone else to bring up that motion.
We, we have, uh, we went through this, uh, but this would be my third time reading through this, uh, budget and we've been in agreement, most of us, about this whole process, and so I was, I was a little taken back by the, the gate issue, um, but um, you know, that's pennies compared to what the budget
Right.
is. Um, and so we're, we're at the deadline here for where the budget needs to be
Right.
uh, approved and haggle over five thousand dollars. On a gate, it's so, something we can fix later if, if we need to. Or not need to. So.
Yeah, we don't need to hang the budget up or I just
On a, on a gate.
On, on the first motion, I was unclear. So. My bad.
Well, someone else will need to make that motion because Alderman Letchworth already made it and it died, right?
Okay, well, I would make another stab at that. Well, I make a motion to approve bill three-six seventy-nine as it stands with no exceptions.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
At this time? Any further discussion? I will call for the vote. Alderman Whalen?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
And Alderman Dent?
No.
You guys are gonna put me on the spot. All right. At this time, uh, before I cast my vote, just a reminder to all of our board members in so it's being your first budget process. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that always carries on to a city's budget throughout the year. And it's up to the, the board members to choose to vote or accept any expenditures from the budget. Uh, with that being said, that, uh, I will vote yes. And I will give you guys the option throughout the year to choose to vote for stuff or not to vote for stuff. I mean, I just want you to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
You guys are the, you guys are the vote for the financial spending of the city.
Four items over five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I just want you to keep that in mind, okay?
I'll make a note.
All right.
Doodly noted by Mr. Whalen. Doodly noted.
All right, moving right along. Next item up is bill, there's resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-five.
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and the Merrimack Regional Planning Commission for technical assistance.
All right. I'm not mistaken, this is the floodplain.
Yes. Yes, this is the floodplain administration contract with MRPC. Same amount as last year's contract. There are some changes in the hourly rates, but overall the amount is the same. So they do assist us, um, you know, we have one staff person who handles building permits and floodplain permits, and that's Jared Brown, our building inspector. Um, because these are so technical in nature, um, any kind of permits within the floodplain also require CIMA, the State Emergency Management Administration's approval. Because of that, we do contract with MRPC and have for several years for their assistance when we have this come up. So this is just renewal of that annual contract.
Okay.
And just for a little extra information, not in the, uh, staff summary, we were audited by CIMA just a couple of years ago for our floodplain administration. Um, we had to provide all of the permits that we'd had issued. We did a sites, uh, survey where we drove through town talking with folks. Um, and so they assisted us through that audit process as well, so.
It was fun?
Hmm?
It was fun?
Oh, yeah. Fun.
CIMA loves my mailbox. Well, at this time, is there any discussion for this? Then do I have a motion for resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two-five?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-two-five.
Do I have a second?
Second of the motion.
And I will call for the vote. Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Whalen?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
All right. Uh, next up is the credit and debit card processing changes.
Okay, so this item was also taken before the utility committee, and of course they did not have a quorum, so they couldn't make a recommendation. So we do have some changes, changes at the federal level that have come down regarding credit and debit card processing. Um, and then some internal changes also that are kinda dictated by our card processor, okay? So Acceleron, I mean, most of you have heard that name before. They are currently processing the majority of our credit and debit card payments, okay?
Majority.
Mm, the majority of those are utility payments, but we also through the utility office process business licenses, UTV permits, pavilion rentals, cemetery plots, all of that kinda stuff kinda come through there. So the regulations around charging convenience fees, um, and surcharges as changing again. So just a few years ago, two to three years ago, we changed and we started charging the customers that convenience fee, that three dollars and fifty cents. We were eating it before.
Right.
Well, now they're changing it so that we cannot charge a surcharge or a convenience fee for in-person payments made with a debit card or a prepaid credit card. We can charge four percent sur- surcharge for MasterCards and up to three percent for Visa cards. Now, yeah, Acceleron, their customers, because they service multiple cities and utilities, seventy percent of all the card processing across all of their customers is debit cards. So that's one we can't charge that fee for. What we could do if we choose is we can charge a convenience fee for online payments. But for in-person, in the office, um, we can no longer charge those fees. So there's that. Okay. So also, we currently offer an auto pay option for folks to have their bill paid on their credit cards. So we're no longer gonna be able to offer that auto pay option, uh, for cards. You can still do it via check, so ACH. Um, you can make arrangements with your bank. You can, yeah, all of those things you can do for auto payments. We just won't be able to do it with cards anymore. Okay? So here we, and just so that you all are aware, Acceleron does have a customer-side web-based auto pay feature. But it's not available unless and until we launch the prepay side of their services. Okay? So, if, if we get to that point, then we would be able to launch that and customers would be able to go online and set up their own information and set up auto pay. Um, also related to credit cards. So we currently have two, I don't wanna say machines, but the ability to process cards via Acceleron as well as we still have a US Bank card reader. But that machine is no longer supported for security patches and things of that nature. We could upgrade it. It's eight, nine hundred a piece for those machines. Um, we have one, but that would keep us in the business of using two different card processors and we would really prefer to go to one. Uh, it just kinda streamlines things. A little bit, one of the things that staff liked, and I'm sure some customers do too, about the US Bank card reader is you could, for someone who had multiple accounts, you could pay for them all in one payment and then they only got charged the one-time three dollar and fifty cent fee. But with the fees going away, then they don't have those extra charges. They'll just have to, through the Acceleron system, it's a transaction per account. You can't lump them together. So that's one downside. At this point, staff is recommending that we, um, implement number one. So that's eliminating those, um, convenience fees. As soon as Acceleron's ready to make that change, implementing number two. Let me look up here, what is number two again? Uh, the auto pay for cards. And then number three would be getting rid of the US Bank card reader and, and no longer using those effective July thirtieth. So two and three would be effective July thirtieth if you all were so, to approve such changes. Like I said, the first one, we really don't have much choice in, um, for those fees. I would stand for any questions.
No.
I don't have any.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the credit debit card processing changes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll call for the vote. Alderman Whalen?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderman Dent?
Yes.
All right. Last but not least, uh, bid three phase demand meters.
Do you want me to talk about these, Steve? I can. I, I can if you want me to. So, uh, given that our electric meters, um, we purchase them through NextGrid, even if we purchase them elsewhere, we've gotta send them to NextGrid to be programmed to work with our system. Um, this is just to make sure that we have stock on hand for when we have customers who need either replace meters or a customer who's newly going on to demand or, are these demand? That's how it's listed. You'll see, um, something new is that eighteen percent tariff charge. So that's a new fee that, this is the first time that's reared its head for us. So anyway, since it is over five thousand, it comes to you all to vote on. This is a sole source provider given our system. Like I said, even if we purchase them elsewhere, we gotta send them to NextGrid and they have to program them for us, so.
I remember that.
Okay. So. And again, this is so that we have meters on hand.
Right.
Any questions from the board?
How long does it take? When you say order these meters to have them on hand, how long will it be before they're in?
I have not heard a uh, delivery date on these.
Well, I was watching the, the news this morning and I guess they were waiting on a, a deal and they felt pretty confident that some of these tariffs would probably be going away here, here pretty soon, so I, I didn't know if we, we withheld for just a short time and, and tried to see if those tariff charges might fall off. Eighteen percent is
Gotcha.
That's a pretty hefty.
Yeah, that's a chunk, yeah.
Hefty chunk on that. Just a, just something to, you know, consider. If, if it's gonna be weeks and weeks before they're here.
Right.
If we held out a few more weeks.
We can ask that question, but I don't.
See if it's the comp, you know, the country that these, these are manufactured, if it's one of the ones that are, is on the trade deal.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, we can ask that question. I just don't have that answer tonight, so.
Typically with NextGrid,
That's what, that's what I've seen just in my short time here has been, everything takes weeks and weeks and so I I was just was trying to play it with the money.
Years.
Yeah, or years, the money side of this, if it saves us a little money, I, I'm just throwing that out.
Honestly, the gateways, which are the piece that we're still waiting on, which are the collectors of the data from all the meters, the individual meters, they've been on order since March first a year ago. So I was told last week that they should be by mid-July. I'm not holding my breath. So.
What's our inventory like on meters?
I think on these ones, cause these are larger than, you know, these, these aren't going on residential, right? Um, I think we're out.
Uh, who do we have, who do we have on those three phases? Do we have US Foods on them and?
Um, I can't tell you off the top of my head. Yes, they are.
What would we do?
So according to that, that rate study, we had eighty-one customers who were those larger end demand meter customers.
If we don't have any, well, what do we do if one goes down?
Good question. I, I mean, I don't have any.
I know, I know, it's not a smart answer. I just, I agree with if we can save eighteen percent, eight, eighteen percent, but if we've been waiting a year.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So how long, I, here.
And do they bill us when they ship them or do they bill us when we place the order?
No, they, they bill us when we.
Place the order?
No, no.
When you receive them?
Well, they'll bill us and we have to pay half for us.
There you go.
Okay.
I mean, do you guys wanna put a time limit that if, if it's anticipated to take longer than such and such?
And do what if they don't come in? I mean, it's a single source.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're there, we're had.
Right.
I, I, I just.
So how, how many are you, you're ordering one?
Well, we're ordering eight.
Eight.
We got eighty on the grid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna go order eight. But how often do we replace them? Do you know that, Steve? Have you ever had to replace a?
I have not, and that's how this came to light. Previous superintendent had one in stock, basically, and so we used that and now we're like, you know, the new, the new, uh, lead man did inventory over there and said
We don't have any.
We better get on it, so, yeah.
Well, he's concerned, I think.
So are we sending the old one off to get repairs that you guys had swapped out?
I, I'd not that I, I haven't heard that. Yeah, so I'll have to ask the lead man what the plan is with that.
And I, I don't.
Feasible, yes.
I don't know that it was a, a swap out. I, you know, I mean, because of a bad meter. I don't know that that's the case.
Gotcha.
We may have never ordered any extra when we switched everything. We might have bought eighty. I mean, that's a lot of dick and find out, but.
This unfortunately is kind of with the transition of.
I understand, and the supply chain too. You know, in past practice, it may not have been a big deal to have one here in a reasonable time, but.
Given the fact, what we've seen with NextGrid, um, a- and I know people get sideways, why are we still using NextGrid? We're in a, we have five more years of a contract. And to buy that out would be wildly expensive and then just to buy into another system would be even worse. So I, me personally, I'd recommend we order them and get them coming, just
That's what I'm wondering here.
So it's on their radar.
Okay.
Anybody questions?
I do. Do we ever know what the warranty is like on these or just like kind of?
I don't know this one off the top of my head, but they do warranty the antennas and the different pieces and parts up into I think it was, uh, a year on the.
Trying to remember. Well, the, so, so these are different. I've not dug into the electric ones, the same way I have the water. Now, the water modules, cause these, with the electric meters, those modules, those communication models come built in. So it's not a separate component.
All one unit.
Whereas water, that's a separate component. You have your meter and then you have your module. The water modules have a ten-year warranty? I'm wanting to say, because those were ones that, we had massive shipment that we sent back and like about, I don't remember what the percentage was, but quite a few of them over half were on a fifty, still a fifty percent warranty and some of them were at thirty-five percent based on how far their batteries had run down and when they were first put into service.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly what these warranties are on the electric ones. I'd have to look that up.
All right, that's all I got. All right, this time do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the three-phase demand meters.
I second that motion.
This time I'll call for the vote, Alderman Whalen?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I will call for the vote, Alderwoman Dent?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth?
Yes.
And Alderman Whalen?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for attending tonight.